Good morning, everyone. I will call to order the June 5th, 2025 meeting of the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners, seeing all three commissioners present. I ask Director of our OISP office, Eli Gilman, to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of a united space of America, and to the republic for which you stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everyone. It's been a challenging week for many, and I want to start by acknowledging the death of an Upper Providence police officer that occurred Monday night here in the county. We extend our deepest condolences to the family of the officer. It's difficult to imagine the pain that they're enduring right now. We also want to extend our sympathies to the entire police department in Upper Providence who lost a colleague and a friend. And to honor the family's privacy, we had withheld the name, I believe that's public now, Officer Flynn, Christine Flynn. And I think it's a moment to recognize that every day our police officers... I've got to change that ringtone. But every day... Look, every day our officers are carrying on some burden, firefighters or EMTs. They're dealing with very challenging circumstances personally, in your work, and we have to not only be grateful for their service, but also match that with support for their mental well-being. So, on behalf of the county, we will share and say that first responders are not alone, that we stand with you, and we're not only committed to that through words, but committed to building a system that protects those of us who protect the communities. So, we're committed on a number of fronts, so we'll talk about that more, you know, in this meeting and in further meetings, but I want to give my colleagues a chance to comment on this, too.
Yeah, I just want to also offer my condolences to the family of the Upper Providence police officer that took his own life. I had a conversation with the police chief the next day and just offered our support and condolences to his team as well. His loss was tragic, and I would also echo Commissioner McKeja's sentiments that I want anyone that may be suffering and thinking about taking their own life to avail themselves to the many resources that we have in our social safety net throughout Montgomery County. So, I'll continue to keep his family in prayer, as well as the whole Upper Providence community. Turn it over to Commissioner Comalow.
Well, I was going to talk about it, but I guess I could talk about it now. So, this is, it's a very sad situation, as mentioned, you know, and our police officers, and we talk about it all the time, you know, all our first responders, they're there when we need them, they're there in our worst moments, and we don't recognize them at our happiest moments. And they're, you know, we see fires and everything else, and I've said this before, when something's happening, they run in while we run away. They don't give it a second thought to do their job and to protect our community. And in this instance, I've actually knew this officer, he, since he was a kid, he grew up in my neighborhood, I know his parents very well, and he was dedicated and committed to doing the best job possible. He, it's all he wanted to do was be a police officer. And he was also a limerick township fire, volunteer firefighter as well. So, he's committed his life to the health and safety and well-being of our communities. And it's unfortunate that you get to a point where you don't have any other options, or you don't believe you have any other options, to do what he did. We don't like to see that at any time. But I've seen or heard reports before that the number-one reason for deaths in police officers mainly is suicide. And it's a very, it's a very tough job. My dad, you all know, I've said this before, my dad was a police officer, so I know what it's like, I know what it's like when I walk out the door, and I know what it's like when they come home at the end of the night, or at the end of their shift. And they say the happiest sound a wife hears, or a spouse hears, is the sound of Velcro at night, or at the end of a shift. And that, that's Velcro sound, because when they're removing their bulletproof vest. And it's, it's a very tough career, and we're proud to have the police officers, not only here in Montgomery County, but throughout the United States. And as my fellow commissioners mentioned, that, you know, we stand with them, we do and will always do what we can to be very supportive. But it's a very sad situation. And then, of course, the fa, his family and friends are all devastated. I mean, everyone that knew him only has positive things to say. But unfortunately, like everything else, there's, there's stories that are circulating, and there's a lot of stuff out there. And, you know, we don't know what's accurate, what's not accurate, but we have to remember that he was a husband, brother, son, friend, too many. And he will be remembered by many, many people for everything that he's done, you know, through, through being in school, he was in the band, and that, and so he really, really enjoyed. And I had some cops reach out to me that, that actually taught him when he was going through training at the Police Academy. Just a solid, solid individual that made some, made some unfortunate errors in his life and took the ultimate way of leaving us. But I, you know, I ask two things. If you, if you're familiar with the family, please, you know, know that they need your support, that they need your care, and they need your love. If you're not familiar with the family, that's okay. But what I do ask is that if you have a police officer in your family, or you have a police officer friend, give them a hug, shake their hand, thank them, know that you care and you, and you're very supportive of, you know, what they do, and very appreciative, because they need to hear it, too. They need to hear that we're behind them. So, it's always, you know, you see them at a store, whatever, thank them for their service and their commitment and dedication to our community, because without them, I couldn't imagine what society would be like.
So, if there's ways that we can support, I know, if our constable can share that on our socials and online, ways to support the family, police department, people in the community, the local officers, we'll share those as well. So, since our last meeting, we've had a successful primary election day on May 20th, and I want to just take a moment to thank everyone who's participating, whether they were a candidate or a poll worker. I want to say thank you to the 2,950 poll workers who participated, both helping people vote at the polls, but also canvassing, tabulating, write-in votes, and many of those folks are county employees who served as election workers. So, thank you to everyone who stepped up to perform their civic duty, both as a participant in democracy or those helping others vote. And looking ahead, the next election is November 4th, and as many folks in this room may know, there are three seats up for retention on the Pennsylvania Supreme Court, two seats that are up for election of the Commonwealth Court, and two in the Superior Court. So, important statewide elections, as well as very local races, starting with some of the election positions, judges of elections, but also school board members, township supervisors, and jury and commissioner is another one, and a number of local positions. So, make sure you mark calendars and make a plan to vote. Another topic that I think is important, because we've received a lot of questions about the current budget being considered in Congress, which passed by one vote in the U.S. House, so-called H.R. 1, I can't say it without laughing, the Big Beautiful Bill Act. But I think it's important for us to know as a county what's in the bill and what's important to us. So, I'm going to start by actually just noting that there's three positive things I'll note, which is that there's a tax exemption for municipal bonds, which allow it, allow for lower costs for us to protect counties' ability to finance infrastructure. There's state and local funding for preparation for the World Cup in 2026, which is something that we're going to have to do here in Pennsylvania, where we're hosting. And there's money for counties and localities to invest in soil, water, and land stewardship. Now, that's three things, but there's also many serious concerns. And for one, the bill will take away healthcare for millions of people around the country by enacting new work requirements and imposing new out-of-pocket costs, among other changes. So, in Montgomery County, over 120,000 people, or 14% of the county's population, use Medicaid. Thousands of them will lose health coverage if these provisions are enacted. The bill also eliminates funding for low-income home energy assistance, so that's LIHEAP, which is a big help to many seniors and homeowners here in the county. It eliminates that funding for the next decade, which helps thousands of Pennsylvanians pay their heating bills. The bill also cuts $300 billion from SNAP, which is the Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program. There are 65,000 people in Montgomery County who receive benefits through SNAP, and that's children, seniors, and individuals living with disabilities who get nutrition support. So, I'm going to be advocating, we're going to be advocating to our federal delegation to share exactly the impact of these policies on Montgomery County. And I think it'd be very important for the public to be a part of that process, share information, stories with us, share them directly with your members of Congress. Again, this is a bill that passed by one vote, and it's going to go through the Senate. Maybe it'll pass, maybe it won't pass, but if it does, it'll go back to the House. So, it's important for us to share the impact of that with our federal delegations, so they fully consider the consequences locally. So, on the same note, on a federal issue, in here in Norristown this week, there's been reportedly 20 individuals who were detained or taken somewhere, and I say somewhere because we have almost no information on this, by ICE. And I say that because we know very little about what ICE is doing, who they're focused on, and, and where they're going. And so, we need help from the community, and the individuals need help in better understanding that, so that we can actually advocate for our residents where appropriate. So, it's deeply concerning, it generates an atmosphere of fear amongst residents of Norristown. You know, people are now afraid to go to work, to school, their children to go to school, or to go to the grocery store. One of these breaks happened at a farmer's market, and it's concerning for a number of reasons. And one, I want to highlight just the impact on children. When I hear that kids are now afraid to go to school, it's important to say, to note that the U.S. Constitution, as interpreted by the Supreme Court, has found that there is a right to education rather than immigration status in this country, because whether your parents had legal status or not, or whether you do, it's not your fault, and you should not be deprived of an education that would make it impossible for you to contribute fully to the progress of this nation. And that's something that was recognized by the U.S. Supreme Court. So, we have to think about the rights that are at stake when, when these enforcement actions are creating this atmosphere of fear that are inhibiting people from exercising those rights. So, I just want to say, and I'll turn this over to my colleague, that, you know, the federal government put us on a list of jurisdictions that were targeted for removing federal funding. That list represented, I believe, more than half the population of the United States. So, I think the list has already been removed, so it's unclear what's happening. But from our stance in Montgomery County, we are doing everything within our limited rights. So, we're not a branch of the federal government, we don't enforce immigration policy, we're here to think about public safety and the well-being of all of our residents, and particularly in our immigrant communities, and we're going to recognize this, this month in June for Immigrant Heritage Month. We simply would not be where we are without our residents who are immigrants. And the question of whether or not someone is legal or not, or has legal status, is actually a very complicated one. There are hundreds of thousands of people who have legal status, have had it revoked overnight, based on decisions that are in the courts and currently being litigated. There were students at Penn State, for example, who were told overnight that they had to leave the country because their legal status was revoked. So, it's not an easy question of who's here with a lawful status or not, and people are entitled to due process. So, we're going to make sure that we support our residents, our communities, their families, to ensure that they can navigate these and protect their own rights. And we'll hear more from Nellie Jimenez-Arbalo, our Director of Immigrant Affairs, on what that looks like. Final thing I just want to say on that is, it's, it's not easy for people to witness someone being taken literally from a farmer's market while they're trying to live their daily lives. And I know many people have taken videos and sharing them online, but please, you know, do not put yourself or anyone at risk of escalating to a situation of confrontation with ICE, their law enforcement. We don't want to see something tragic happen where, where there's a confrontation and, and violence. So, please, you know, be cautious of that. I think, you know, there are civil ways to express your disagreement with what's happening, and we, in fact, do need to know what's happening. So, the fact that people are actually sharing this is important for the community to understand what is happening at the federal level and how these resources are being deployed. But please be careful and do not, you know, engage in a physical confrontation or anything close to that with any, any law enforcement. And the way to, way to succeed here and to challenge this is in courts, and for those individuals who have rights to invoke, you know, working with nonprofit partners and others to give them legal resources. So, finally, I have two things that I'll mention, which is that we're hosting a business breakthrough roundtable with a focus on immigrant-owned businesses on June 23rd at noon on Zoom. It's going to be run by our Commerce Department, and in honor of this month, we'll have Jennifer Rodriguez, President of the Greater Philadelphia Hispanic Chamber of Commerce, as keynote speaker, as well as our Immigrant Affairs Director, Nellie, and Donna Richmond, our two DEI officers. So, that's going to be a virtual event on Monday, June 23rd at noon. Registration link can be found on the Commerce Department page. Thank you, our Director, Steve Forster, for that. Finally, we kicked off Monaco's first-ever AgVenture Challenge. So, this was really nice event on a Friday evening. I don't know if Sam Applefield is here, but we have a new challenge in Monaco to get, to help people better understand our agricultural industry, farms. Anyone want to take a guess how many farms are in Monaco? You probably know, Eli. She said 54. This is, so good for that. So, this is stunning. 180, 182, 54, 182. Get one more guess.
2:30.
2:30. 550 farms in Montgomery County. So, it's, you know, it's really, you know, it's a critical sector in our economy, and it's also critical for those thinking about sustainability and buying food locally. And we kicked off this challenge to help people better know and understand facts like that, which are, you know, really impressive. So, basically, check out the website, look up our AgVenture Challenge, we'll share it on our socials, but there's a Bitcoin card, there's activities you can do to better get to know what's happening in terms of the agricultural community here in Monaco. So, with that, I'll turn it over to my colleague, Commissioner Comalow.
Thank you so much, Commissioner McKeja. Good morning, everyone. How's everyone doing?
Great.
Okay. So, before I start my announcements and do what I typically do, I've spent the last couple days, and especially this morning, in deep reflection. And I want to just take a moment to speak about the pain, division, and urgency many are feeling across Montgomery County. In the recent days, we lost neighbors to a tragedy, a tragic voting accident where a man drowned, four lives were taken in car accidents. We heard about the law enforcement officer had died by suicide. Immigrant families in Norristown are being terrorized. And online, on our very platforms in Montgomery County, we're seeing deep division, hate, and the dehumanizing of our friends and neighbors. People of color, our LGBTQ-plus friends and neighbors, and immigrants are under attack, not just nationally, but right here where we call home. And I just want to say publicly, this is not acceptable. And I'm calling on this board to speak out clearly and unequivocally against all forms of hate and discrimination. We cannot be silent when our neighbors are afraid. We cannot ignore pain because it makes us uncomfortable. We must lead. We must lead with courage, with clarity, and with compassion. We also need to remember what we do here. There are people in Montgomery County who are hungry, who do not have a home, who are working two jobs and still can't afford their prescriptions. Our seniors are struggling to make ends meet. These are not Democrat or Republican issues. These are human problems, and they demand a united, human response. I'm asking all of us, this board, our community, and everyone listening in this room and online, to focus on not what divides us, but what unites us. We are more than our differences. We are stronger than hate, and we are better when we choose to see each other with dignity and love. And I was listening to a song by Kirk Franklin this morning. It's, it's one of the stations that I choose to listen to on my way to work. And one of those songs, and one of the lyrics from that song is, "Help us to see the love we see, help us to love and see each other as God loves and sees us." That's the heart of what we need right now. Let that guide our work today and all the days ahead. I also want to talk a little bit about the ICE raids in Norristown. The reports of immigration enforcement activity have shaken many of our residents, and I just want to simply acknowledge that the fears our residents have to face every day. And the choices, you heard Commissioner McKeja talk a little bit about this, that many have to make as to whether or not to leave their home, to earn money, to get an education, or just simply to buy food. Our immigrant residents, like every person who resides in Montgomery County, are an integral fabric of this community. I'm proud that my right-hand woman, Raya, is a proud immigrant from India. I'm proud that my new intern is a proud immigrant from Egypt. So, it's true this month, and it will be true next month, that we need to celebrate the vibrancy and the beauty that immigrants bring to this amazing community that we call home. Norristown is a place of resilience and culture. It's a community that's been my home for more than 40 years. It's a place where many families have come to build a better future. We won't let fear interrupt that work, because in our community, our beauty is our diversity. And so, I want to stand, especially with our Latino friends and neighbors that wake up every day with fear of discrimination and persecution, and I just want to continue to show my support for that community in the days ahead. And I would echo Commissioner McKeja's sentiments. Thank you for saying that. Don't engage, right? We don't want, it's tragic enough as it is that we have some of these activities going on in Norristown. Don't engage, don't get yourself in trouble. There are productive ways to go about making sure that your voice is heard and your concerns are heard. I just want to encourage everyone to come and be a part of our Immigrant Heritage Month event, where we're going to be honoring the beauty of our immigrant community. I'm going to skip over a couple things here. I want to also acknowledge Pride Month. The way our community stands together and shows up for others is something I never take for granted. And on Monday, we had an opportunity to raise the Pride Flag, and I'm grateful to our Commission, I see Joe Rooney, I'm triggering you. We had an opportunity to, yep, you're here, I see you. I want to thank, I want to thank our LGBTQ Commission, our commissioners, for helping really to plan this event, our Head of DEI, Donna Richmond, who's not here today, thank you for your leadership. Oh, there, oh, there you are, I can't see you. Thank you for, for your leadership on Monday's event. We had over 100 people out, both members from the community and allies, to support the pride raising, the raising of the Pride Flag. So, thanks to everyone that was there, and I'm proud that Montgomery County stands with our LGBTQ-plus friends and neighbors. And I've got another thing. Juneteenth is coming up. June 16th, 10:00 a.m., we're going to do our annual Juneteenth Flag-Raising Event, and it's a powerful event that commemorates our county's and country's history, celebrates freedom, and reminds us of the continued work that we still need to do to ensure that all people have access to liberty, dignity, and human rights. Again, thank you, Donna, for spearheading this. And then, last but not least, I have two things, last but not least. I'd like to acknowledge that Eid al-Ahad is the second of two major Islamic festivals, and it celebrates the story of Abraham. And I just want to just remind our friends and neighbors from the Muslim community that we stand with you, and Eid Mubarak to all that celebrate this coming weekend. And lastly, I want to take a minute to acknowledge the loss of someone from our Montgomery County family, the mother of former Commissioner Ken Larssen. The mother of former Commissioner Ken Lawrence passed away on May 21st at 78. Etta Lawrence was a county employee for more than 12 years. She called Montgomery County home since 1984. And we are grateful to Etta for her service to Montgomery County, but more grateful to Etta for giving this to Commissioner Ken Lawrence. And I want to honor her legacy and just take a moment to just reflect on all that she brought to our vibrant community. So we extend our deepest condolences, love, and prayers to Ken and the entire Lawrence family. That's it for me.
Thank you for sharing that, and I'll extend the same to Ken, and thank him for his mom's service to the county through so many years. With that, go ahead.
All right. Let's talk about a couple of things that are going on first, I guess. HHS Health and Human Services is having their summer grocery store gift card drive. So I want to share that our HHS department just kicked this off, and it's, the drive runs through July, July 11th. Almost 20% of Montgomery County kids get free breakfast and lunch at school. So the summertime actually means a higher risk of hunger for these kids. So this drive is a great way to alleviate some of the stress on the families during the summer. So if you can, please help out. There's information there, assuming it's on our website as well, to help out. And you can mail donations and that to help this. It's a great program, it's a great initiative, and we look forward to another year of success. We talked a lot about our police officers, and I'm just going to touch on that last week, earlier this week, I don't even know, days run together sometimes, it's been a crazy week, as Commissioner Winder mentioned. There was, our Fire Academy had a graduation ceremony for 36 volunteer firefighters that they completed the Pennsylvania Entry Level Firefighter Training Program. They will go, 36 of them will go and serve 24 different departments in Montgomery County, Berks, Chester, and Delaware Counties. So we're proud to have a really top-notch public safety training facility here in Monaco, and inspiring volunteers from all over the region to get their training here in our Conshohocken Training Facility. We often talk about the need for more EMS and first responders in Montgomery County, and really across the state. So it's, it's great to see a new class of graduates ready to go and make an impact on the community. I know that there's going to be another graduating class coming up in the near future, and I believe that class has probably 40, between 40 and 50, I don't remember the exact number, I think it's 46, volunteer firefighters that will be getting their certification. So again, you know, you've heard us talk about the fire over in Abington, and how there was hundreds of firefighters, 86 different apparatuses there. It was just an amazing, amazing show of dedication. And when you see something like that, you really truly understand how important it is to have, you know, firefighters and all these volunteers, because majority of firefighters here in Montgomery County are volunteers. So we greatly appreciate all their, all their dedication and efforts. I think I have a couple notes here. Commissioner Winder did mention about the, there was a, fortunately the other night, there was a crash. Limer County was going through a rough week, but there was a, you know, it turned out to be, you know, a group of kids that were, that allegedly were stealing or doing something at a Target, left the store, and went speeding down and within a mile of the store, they crashed. And it was devastating crash, and we lost three, possibly four of the individuals that were involved. Once again, you know, we could always rely on Facebook to be right there with all of the late breaking news, and it's amazing to see how fast people jump the conclusions and start throwing our police officers under the bus, and obviously, it was all their fault. And it's appalling, and it's being investigated, and I'm sure, you know, our county detectives and the DA's office, like everything else that happens in Montgomery County, when they, when they get involved and they do the investigation, it's a very, very detailed, detailed investigation. They do an incredible job, and I'm sure at the end of it, whatever the results of that investigation are, I know that our county detectives and DA's office will, will look at every, every aspect of what occurred. But the sad thing is that there were four kids that, three, possibly four, lost their lives over just stupid, stupid decisions. Again, it's families that are impacted, and it's unfortunate that these things happen. And it's on the cusp of us losing a police officer. You know, Commissioner Makija mentioned about Montgomery County being on a list that DHS put out late last week, I believe it was. I start, you know, I, and I was quoted in the newspaper and that, you know, I was kind of perplexed by it. I, so I start reaching out to my contacts in Washington, as well as Congressman Fitzpatrick's office and that, really trying to understand why Montgomery County was actually on that list, because we, we're not a sanctuary county. And like some other counties in Pennsylvania, it's, that were named, and we're all trying to figure out what was the determinations on why and why, and how we ended up on that list. The list was pulled down, from what I understand, it's being modified. So I'm hoping with my efforts that we actually will be pulled off of that list. So we'll see when it's republished, we'll see what the results are, but I'm not going to, I'm still begging for information. But I've also, and I, you know, I will go on record again, that I, I will always stand with enforcement of the law, and I will always stand with law enforcement. And, you know, there are differences in opinions as far as, you know, immigration statuses and, you know, what ICE is doing or not doing. But a couple of things I want to touch upon that. We all have differing opinions, and I know as my fellow commissioners, we may differ on certain things, but the personal attacks against my fellow commissioners goes way beyond what's acceptable. And, you know, we, as a community, as a society, we're always going to, we're always going to have differing opinions. We're not always going to agree, but we cannot, and I've said this before, we cannot continue to attack each other. There's no value to that, it's just, it's ridiculous. It's, you know, this country was built on differing opinions, but it's, it's not acceptable to, to attack those that we, that we don't agree with. And we have to remember that, that this country has been based on legal immigration. People have come here for hundreds of years, they follow the processes, and they're here legally, and they're performing amazing, amazing contributions to our communities and our society. And we also have to remember that, unfortunately, that there's a lot of people that came here over the borders, they came into this country illegally. And I know we don't like that word, you know, we try to, you know, we like this to be undocumented. That doesn't excuse the fact that there are people that didn't follow the process, and there's consequences, just like there's consequences of the kids that made bad decisions that lost their lives. Everything has consequences. And I too was contacted by many individuals regarding what was happening in Norristown and other parts of the communities out there. And I understand why people may be nervous or concerned or afraid, but the law is the law. And the law needs to be enforced like any other law. I will stand with the enforcement of that law, and I will stand with law enforcement every day, 24 hours a day. You know, as, as we all know, being in this country is a privilege, it's a right, and, and we have to follow the laws that are on the books when you come into this country. And I know we don't, we don't agree on that, but that's my position, and that's my perspective. And I will stand alongside law enforcement and enforcement of the laws. And with all that, I've been contacted recently by our police chiefs, our fire department chiefs, groups of people out there, and they have asked me to raise up and request that Montgomery County has an incredible 9/11 memorial. And right now, it's stationed at our emergency management building, and they're asking what it would take, or if the county would bring it back now that the courthouse construction outside properties is coming together. They'd like to see that 9/11 memorial come back to Norristown courthouse with the other memorials. So I encourage, I don't know what it would take for us to bring that back, or what has to happen, but I know that this is a request, and I think it's a, it's a great request, and I think that everyone should see and remember 9/11, and remember the thousands of people that we lost that day, and the thousands of people that we lost years after from, from, you know, cancers and all that, that were potentially related to being around the World Trade Center, as well as people that took their own lives because they could not deal with what occurred on 9/11, that they were in the building, whatever it may be. So I'd like to see that 9/11 memorial brought back to Norristown, where everyone could see and appreciate, and know that there are people that lost their lives on that day. And I think I covered, oh, I, you know, two things. One is, is that I noticed that, you know, we try to celebrate as many different groups in, within Montgomery County here, but unfortunately, I don't know how we missed this one, but May was National Military Month that we, that we didn't recognize. So maybe it's something that we should look at for next year. And as well as, you know, we have an immigrant festival going on later this morning outside. I'm not sure how fast it came together, but I hope that it is something that we do annually. I think it's a good idea to, to show that we have an immigration population out there that, that provides so much for our communities. But there's a whole list of different groups, immigrant groups out there that aren't there this year, didn't receive invites or didn't know about it. So again, not faulting anyone, I think that when we do these things, we do one, we learn from it, and we make next year's better. So I know that there's groups of other immigrant groups or associations, or, excuse me, whatever you want to do out there that we could invite to participate, because I know they would love to be here too, and show off their, their culture and everything else. Thank you.
Okay. We're going to move on and hear from our Director of Immigrant Affairs on immigrant resources.
Good morning. Buenos dias. Commissioner Makija, Commissioner Winder, Commissioner DeBella, members of the public, and employees and team members. Thanks for having me. Do you know that we have about 100,000 immigrants from around the world here in Montgomery County? My name is Nellie Jimenez, and I'm your First Director of Immigrant Affairs. The Office of Immigrant Affairs, our mission is simple, but it's powerful. We're here to empower and support immigrants, refugees, and newcomers by making sure they have access to services, feel included, and can fully participate in our economy. Our vision is very clear, Montgomery County, where everyone, no matter where they're from, feels safe, valued, and connected. Immigrants are a driving force in our economy. They bring fresh ideas, critical jobs, and boost productivity. Their spending power helps local business thrive, and they contribute significantly to our tax base at all levels. Immigrants pay the same taxes that we all do, federal income tax, Social Security tax, Medicare, property, state income tax, child tax, and so on. The taxes they pay help to cover federal and state services that benefit communities everywhere. In 2014, immigrants paid an estimate of $328 billion, I'm going to repeat it, $328 billion to a state, local, and federal government. And this is only a piece of the contributions that many immigrants have. Beyond the economy, immigrants enrich our culture, language, food, music, and traditions. They also start businesses at a higher rate than US-born residents and bring global perspective into classrooms, which benefits all students. Today, about 100%, 100,000, which is over 11% in our community, are immigrants. We come from all over the world, with the largest group from Asian and Latino America. Me, from Venezuela, Caracas, Venezuela, South America, and in places like, you know, Prussia and Norristown, you will hear languages like Chinese, Spanish, Korean, and Hindi spoken every day. Immigrants are working in key industries, healthcare, tech, retail, manufacturing, and construction, and they're twice as likely to be self-employed. We see them running restaurants, tech startups, and home care services across the county. Many of our immigrant neighbors are highly educated. In our schools, we see a rich mix of languages, Spanish, Vietnamese, Arabic, Korean, and more. Bilingual households are becoming the norm in many areas in our community. We also reflect in our schools. To your right, you will find all the sources and the years where I found all the demographic information. There you go. So if you have any doubts, here is the information. I want a special thanks to PA Schoolwork, my wonderful friends from Children's First, and everybody who puts together information. It's very hard to find information, I have to dig in a lot to try to get this. So thank you so much for those who find the data and put it together for us to share. Next. Our office assists to make sure immigrants can access services, feel included, and have a voice in county decisions. I'm here to advocate, connect, and respond to urgent needs. But what is my role inside of the Commissioner's Office? Megan?
Next.
Thank you. I advise the commissioners on immigrant-related issues, help chip equity, focus initiative, and make sure immigrant voices are part of county governance. In the community, we build partnership with nonprofits and schools, and health providers, law enforcement. We lead outreach to underserved communities, represent the county at all levels, and respond quickly when new challenges arise, including this week, meeting with a lot of our community members, our community organizations like Aklamo, Secate, and other organizations that are doing a lot of good work to help immigrants in these difficult times. Our work focuses on five key areas, building infrastructure, improving languages' access, promoting civic engagement, help people navigate systems, and supporting economic empowerment. Next. And I want to share a couple of examples of what we are doing in the county. Last month, we launched the first one, Montgomery County Immigrant Resource Center webpage. And that's the link, you can find us in the website. It's a one-stop hub for legal, social, and educational resources available in multiple languages. This is the beginning, the beginning. We are working right now in adding more information. Thank you for, to our communication team that have been so kind to me and have worked with me to make sure that we have the information that we need. Then the Commerce Department, Stephen. Then the Commerce Department, Stephen. We're working closely with his team to support immigrant-owned businesses. That includes creating a list of documents that need translation, simplifying the process so small businesses can have more access to the loans and the grants and the different resources that we have here in Montgomery County. The next is the For Honorities Office. Wow, I pronounced it well. That's a hard word for someone who's learning English. And I'm helping ramp this public material to be multilingual. For example, the How to File a Protection from Abuse Order brochure is not available in English, Spanish and Korean. There are also meetings with immigrant service organizations to improve how to support survivors navigating the abuse protection process. And then finally, last but not least, our wonderful Montgomery County Public Defenders Office, especially the Child Advocacy and Juvenile Delinquency Units. They work with some of the most vulnerable youth in our community. These teams take a holistic approach, not just handling the legal side of it, but the human side of it, making sure connecting kids with mental health-influencing abuse. My final thoughts. Montgomery County is proud to stand with our immigrant communities. We're committed to building a future where everybody can thrive together. I also want to take a moment to acknowledge and speak from my heart about what is happening and the ICE activity here, what is happening here in our community. I have heard from many families who are living in fear. Fear of ICE raids, fear of being separated from their loved one, fear of simple being seen. This kind of terror has no place in our community. No one, no child, no adult, no human being should ever be afraid to take their child to school, to take them to the doctor, to go to school, to seek help when they need it. My fellow immigrants, I stand with you, whatever your situation is. Thanks again, Commissioners, for having me and for giving me the opportunity to present in front of you. I will keep working hard to make sure our office keeps honoring our immigrant community and everyone else in our county. Muchas gracias and thank you so much.
Well, thank you. We're here in North Town. Okay. Go ahead.
I do have a comment. I know there was some reflection during our open comments about the Immigrant Heritage Month event that we're hosting. I want to be clear, right, that we're trying to engage all immigrant communities and you are actively doing that work.
Yes.
And that we collectively as Commissioners can also share those organizations. So I would suggest if there's anyone that has felt left out, maybe we can reflect on
Absolutely.
the groups that you've been inviting and making sure that we've got full coverage to be inclusive. So can you talk a little bit about that?
Yes, thank you. So please remember that I have been here two months and a half, right? So I'm getting to know all of the different communities. My 10 years that I was in Aklamo, I really worked mostly with the Latino community. So I've been going out, meeting with different centers. I went to the Moody's Center and visited the center. I have gone to the Jason Center, I have gone to different communities. So we want to invite more people and next year it's going to be much better, Commissioner DeBella, and we will invite more people to participate. The other thing is, it was hard in the beginning when we put it together. We didn't have the actions of ICE happening so violently as it is right now. But we decided that we have to take a stand, that we are still going to honor our immigrant community. We still have a lot of immigrants that we need to celebrate and we want to take the opportunity to bring people together to talk about the concerns that we all have as a community in our county.
Thank you. I just want to say thank you because you are doing an incredible job and you're so lucky to have someone who's been an advocate in the community, working, delivering services, running an organization for a decade. To have that expertise in public service is really exceptional. So we're just grateful for the work.
Thank you. I'm a workaholic, so that's why I have tried to produce a lot of work. And, you know, thank you so much for the opportunity. I feel very honored and I also feel honored that, you know, everybody has been very supportive of our immigrant communities and we are ready to do more and we will, so thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next we'll hear from our CFO, Dean D'Arton, and Dan Kozloff, our financial advisor. Where is Dan coming or just you?
Yeah, I'll introduce someone else.
Okay, right.
Good morning, Commissioners. As you know, the county completed its new money bond issue that was planned for for 2025. That was done on May 21st. Obviously, with the tariff negotiations and how that impacted the financial markets, we were a bit delayed in getting this done. We're fortunate that we did and you're going to hear today from the financing team the results of the bond sale. So today we have Suzanne Mays from Cozen O'Connor. Suzanne serves as Bond Counsel for the county. We have Dan Kozloff and John Karati, both our financial advisors from PFM. So I'm going to turn it over to John Karati to walk through the bond sale results for you.
Thanks, Dean, and good morning, Commissioners. I'm here to talk a little bit about the post-pricing results of the bond sale. As Dean mentioned, that happened May 21st, a couple Wednesdays ago. The county successfully entered the capital markets and sold almost $149 million in bonds. Nearly $145 million of that was applicable to the tax-exempt Series A and $4 million to the taxable Series B. Those bonds were used to finance a portion of the county's five-year capital plan and pay for the cost of issuing the bonds and they're scheduled to settle here in a couple of weeks on June 17th. Next slide, please. So specifically, the Series A bonds generated some premium because they are tax exempt to go up to $155 million that will be used for the project funds associated, like I said, with the five-year capital plan and renovation of county roads and bridges. And the $4 million associated with Series B, which are taxable bonds, will be used towards the loan and grants programs here within the county. The Series A bonds were structured over a level debt service for 20 years and the Series B is a shorter series, given the size, 10 years level debt service on that. The county's AAA rating, as you know, is a big success driver as to why they can have good bond pricings. County was rated AAA for a long time, was downgraded in 2012 to AA1, which is one notch lower. We worked aggressively with the county in 2018, were able to successfully go up to the AAA rating and we've been there ever since. And for the current transaction, Moody's did come back and say that they affirmed that rating of AAA stable. Next slide, please. Specifically, Moody's releases a report every time they give a rating. The three things that they targeted as strengths of the county are the wealthy and dynamic local economy, solid financial position bolstered by the financial management and modest leverage. They also noted that there's strong governance in numerous ways, including the surplus last year in 2024 and adopting and adhering to the formal fund balance policy that you all implemented and the raising of property tax rates to achieve fiscal balance. The county is also seeing strong development within the tax base and economy. Full value, which is known as the market value of the taxable property here within the county limits, has been growing and GDP is outpacing other counties in the region. So all in all, Moody's holds its AAA-rated counties to a high standard and you are right there with them. Getting into the results of the sale. As I mentioned, we successfully priced the bonds on Wednesday, May 25th. We released the preliminary offering document a week prior, engaged with underwriting firms, large bulge bracket firms on Wall Street to gauge their interest in the county's offering and there was a lot of interest. We saw robust interest from eight different banks who submitted a bid. JP Morgan was the winning provider. So this is on a competitive basis where the lowest all-in cost is awarded. That was to JP Morgan, just shy of $420 on the interest rate. And you can see a very competitive bidding process there with second place, known as the cover bid coming in, we call less than a basis point or less than 0.01%. So you like to see those very close to one another, which shows you that there's a competitive market. Next slide, please. This just is a snapshot of where we are today versus where the county's been for their last bond offerings. This goes back about five years or so, six years. And the blue line that you see there at the top is where we're at now. So interest rates are high, we are seeing a volatile market. A lot of factors that contribute to that. But all in all, if you think about this on a dollar-cost averaging, if you look at the far right column of the table below, that is the true interest cost or the borrowing rate on the bonds. Down there in the yellow, we are at the $420, which is a blended average of the two. But, you know, historically speaking, when you look back, county's been in position to take advantage of low borrowing rates and when you dollar-cost average blends that $420 down. This table here is just the pricing results as compared to what we call the benchmark AAA standards. So the Series A tax-exempts go off of the AAA B valve curve and the Series B taxable is look at US Treasuries. As Dean alluded to, we had a very volatile market when we were first intending to price in April. That sort of calmed down and we delayed the sale a little bit to let the markets digest what was going on. So all in all, during the very volatile market, we were able to enter on a calm day and county priced well, as expected, given the AAA rating. This is just a chart of the existing debt, which is shaded in the gray region and then the green shaded new debt of the 2025 bonds layered on top. As you can see, the chart sort of falls down or steps down, which is what you see in a lot of good AAA-rated debt portfolios. And then the next slide is just a tabular version of that. The Series A bonds generated about $11.5 million per year of debt service and the Series B about $500,000 just for the first 10 years. And there you can see the numbers that are added up in the chart prior. And that's it.
Thank you, Commissioners. Thank you. Dean, do you have anything, anything else? Not any questions? Okay, great. All right, next we will hear from Dean again on the quarterly financial update.
Next slide, please. So I'm going to give a financial update here. We, you know, have four solid months under our belt through April 30th of financial information that we're going to talk about. But before I do that, I wanted to give you a quick update on the 2024 audit. So the county is currently, and this is managed through the Controller's Office, being audited for the calendar year 2024. We have a new audit firm that's handling this, that's our external auditors. The target date to have this complete and have our annual comprehensive financial report issued is July 31st of this year. So that will continue to be the target and we'll give updates if that's the change. Next slide, please. Before I get into the financial information, I wanted to talk a little bit about the Volunteer Emergency Service Real Estate Tax Rebate Program that the board put into place last year. And first I'll say congratulations, this is the first year that it's been implemented for '24 and the results were very positive. So overall, we had 79 emergency service agencies that submitted active volunteer rosters for eligible volunteers for this program. Of that, approximately 1,100 active volunteers qualified for the county real estate tax rebate. The rebate ranges between 10% up to 100% of county taxes paid, depending on points earned by the active volunteer through their service to the agency. On average, in 2024, and this is paid out this year, but it's accrued back to '24, the average active volunteer will receive a rebate of about $608, which is significant. That totals up to about $700,000 of real estate tax rebates that will be issued by the county for 2024. With the cooperation of the Controller's Office, we were able to get this processed in this week's check run and the checks are going to be mailed out this Friday. So volunteers will start seeing and hit the mail over the week going into next week. I'd like to thank Public Safety. Brian and his group were very helpful in getting this implemented and have, you know, been a great communication channel to the agencies to provide updates on what's going on and they know that the checks are going to be issued this week as well. Next slide. So now I'm going to turn to a financial performance of the general fund for the first four months of this year. You know, typically at this point in the year, we're still, you know, our major revenue source, real estate tax revenue, is still coming in through the tax collectors. And I'll talk a little bit more about that. But overall, the state, the budget's stable. The trend line here to date is what we would expect at this point in time. Obviously, we have concerns over the uncertainty with the federal funding directly impacting our county services. Some of that, you know, has been cut or is frozen. So, and we have ongoing programs that are funded through these sources. So we continue to closely monitor this, try to get more information as the month's going here. We collected about 18% of the overall general fund revenue budget, just roughly $107 million, and expended about 30%, which is about $185 million. And as I said, that's to be expected. A large chunk of our operating expenditures in the first four months go out for personnel costs and our debt service. Typically, in January and then mid-year, we have most of our larger debt service payments that hit the books. Overall though, personnel costs are trending lower than budget at the moment and I'll talk a little bit more about that, so that's a good sign. Next slide, please. So this is really just a snapshot of the revenue that was collected. And then you can see that 60% of the overall revenue came from real estate taxes and that's just a small portion of what we'll ultimately collect at the end of the flat period. Federal grants, federal and state grants, another 25%. So between those two categories, that's most of the revenue that came in over the first four months. Next slide, please. The other, yeah, next one. Thank you. So these are, go on before.
Very impressive animation.
Trying to keep up with it.
It really changes delivery of the subject matter.
These are the major revenue categories and as you can see, real estate taxes, you know, is the largest, you know, $321 million. We collected, you know, roughly 20% of that, of those funds through April. And as I said, the larger chunk of that will be in by the time we finish the flat period, which is at the end of June. So we'll receive most of our revenue at that point. Federal and state grants, you know, they're obviously ongoing. You know, departments that have federal and state funding have to build forward. So this number fluctuates, but at the moment, you know, for what we know, I don't have concerns for the first six months of the year. Any others speak for themselves. Investment income, I'm going to talk to you a little bit in the next slide ahead. Next slide, please. So this is a concern and, you know, I report this out, you know, as I do financial updates and, you know, we talk about the budget. But, you know, one of the things that we monitor very closely is the growth of our overall real estate assessment base. And, you know, typically, you know, historically, it has grown between a half and three-quarters of a percent naturally. And, you know, on that kind of pace, it would generate, you know, a little over $2 million of new revenue to the the general fund, which isn't much on a budget of $600 million, but it's something. So the trend that we're seeing now, and this is through the end of May, and you look at the chart, last year, we had very moderate growth over the first five months, .03%. Well, now we're in negative territory. And that, as I said, it's not a good sign going into real estate assessment appeal season and the months ahead. We're going to have to closely monitor this and make sure we know what we have ahead of us. I'm hopeful that this trend turns around, but right now it is in negative territory. Next slide, please. And overall, we're still seeing the housing market at lower levels than we had experienced in recent years. When you look at the total homes sold year-to-date, this is for the first five months, you can see that it's kind of, it's flat, it's just down slightly compared to the same five-month period in May. The median home sale price continues to increase. The inventory is low, so people are still looking for homes. But we are, that's a positive sign. You can see that it's up 6% when you compare to May of last year. And even comparing to last month, it's increased 3%. Next slide, please. So some of the emerging revenue trends. As I said, the real estate tax revenue is right in line with what we would expect at this time of the year. The discount period ended on April 1st and then the flat period ends on June 30th. A large portion of the real estate taxes are paid from escrow accounts, mortgage companies. So they're filed electronically with the tax collectors and they obviously took advantage of the discount period. But by the time we get done with June, majority of our real estate tax revenue will be received. And then there'll be some ongoing collections for the remaining between now and the end of the year. Investment income is trending well. I think we're going to outperform the 2025 budget, and that's roughly about $5.9 million. That's in this budget for investment income. We did about $10 million in 2024. However, we anticipated that the feds were going to decrease the rates. They haven't. So that's been positive, favorable to us in the first six months. So I do think that as the months go on, we'll try to get a better projection of this. I think that we will outperform the budget, though. The state gaming revenue, which, as each quarter goes on, this is a growing revenue. It's budgeted at $6 million. Based on the first quarter of this year, I project that we'll probably outperform the budget by 1.2 million. So obviously, something changes in the economy, the world, whatever, that can affect this. But the trend that we're experiencing now, now and what we have been in the last two years, if that continues, this revenue will grow well above what we're seeing inflationary rates at. Next slide, please. Talked about, yeah, the one before that. Yeah, there we go. Next slide. Okay. So we talked about the assessment base, the growth flattens of it. Some of this is coming from unfavorable assessment appeals that are, it's offsetting the positive residential and commercial assessment-based growth that we would typically experience. So some of these assessment appeals that are related to commercial properties are, have any unfavorable effect on the overall growth rate. Federal and state pass-through funding has been reduced or frozen in certain county departments under the new federal administration. I mentioned that earlier. Our departments and fiscal staff continue to monitor both the federal and state budgets for funding reductions either in this year or beyond '26. We have to plan appropriately for that. The county, we have a couple here just as examples that have been reductions in '25. The county's workforce program, the federal funding was reduced by about $600,000. And then in the public health department, we saw a reduction of $150,000 related to the clinic services and things like that that we typically get federal and state funding for. So this is a bit of a scary topic for us as we're planning for '26 and getting through '25. A lot of these programs, they've been operating over the last several years. We might have had to staff up for them. We may had to get facilities up if it's a clinic and it's off-site. So there's a lot that goes with it and you don't just shut it off overnight, right? This is to be planned out and has to be budgeted for and thought through. So as I said, we're going to be paying close attention to what's going on with the federal budget and then any impacts on the state budget as well, because our funding can either be direct from the federal government or it can be federal funding that flows down through the state budget and then to us.
So I would just ask, I know, so this is about $750,000 in federal funds that we are not getting, correct?
What's that?
$750,000 just here?
Yeah, just in those two.
So I would just ask, I know, I think you have a memo on this, Steve, this topic?
Yeah.
Yeah, to share that and make sure that we're tracking. And thank you for being creative. I know you found a few other ways of continuing the program with different funds, but, you know.
Great to you.
Thank you. Yeah, to Jenny, Jenny in particular.
Next slide, please. So when you look at our overall expenses year through April 30th, you can see really it's driven primarily by personnel expense, debt service, and our controllables. As I said, debt service, we have large payments in the first six months of the year. So that's why that percentage is a little bit higher at this point when you look at the total expenses. But that said, we spent about 30% of the budget, which is a good sign. We're trending in the right way after the first four months. Next slide, please. This is just showing you by the major functional areas where the dollars have been spent. And you can see that most of them are in the range of 25% to 30%, depending on the types of services that are being offered. So there's nothing here that is out of line when you're looking at the first four months of the year. Next slide, please. So some of the emerging expenditure trends, as I mentioned, personnel expense trending below budget for the first four months. Our employee healthcare costs are moderately lower year-to-date. And that's just based on claims experience for the first several months. So we'll continue to monitor that, but that is a good sign. In the last two years, we have experienced significantly higher healthcare costs for our employees. And hopefully, this will be more of a stable year for us on that expense topic. Overtime costs are trending a bit higher than what I would expect at this time of year, but that's probably due to vacancies in some of the departments. So any of those higher overtime costs will be offset by vacancy savings in those departments. Just wanted to also point out that included in the 2025 budget is a $4 million negative appropriation. So we're expected to save at least $4 million against the budget. And that's been included in budgets from recent years, the number varies. So we have to first approach it with, we have to save $4 million. And then what we can do above that is great. So the one thing that's underway right now is the actuarial valuation for the employee retirement plan. And as you know, the county contributes to the plan about $30 million a year. That's what we included in the budget. When this valuation report's complete in July, we'll know actually what's required. And I'm hopeful that it'll be something lower than $30 million, which would create some budgetary savings. But we'll know more about that when we get to the month of July and it's presented to the Employee Retirement Board. One known for sure is debt service expense will be trending lower than budget. So with the bond issue being delayed, we're going to spend a little bit less on that new money bond issue for debt service this year. So it's probably going to be about $3.5 million lower than what we expected. That's just budgetary savings for this year. Next slide, please. I did want to note, real estate tax refunds are trending higher. Some of that's attributed to these assessment appeals that I mentioned earlier. So that's about a $1.5 million budget that I would expect is probably going to be a higher expense than what we had budgeted. But we'll know more as we go through the next several months and get closer to the fall when we put out the proposed budget for '26. Overall, our energy costs are pretty stable for '25. As you know, the county joined with Bucks, Delaware, and Chester County, and we have created the Sustainable Energy Partnership in southeastern Pennsylvania. So we're now purchasing wholesale electricity from the market, and that started last year for '25 and '26. So we have our electricity locked in for this year and most of next year, and the prices were pretty favorable to us. So that'll help with our budget planning going into the new year. Next slide, please. I did want to touch on capital a bit. So over the first four months, we spent about $20 million, $20.6 million on capital projects. About $16 million of it, that's over 3/4 or 75% of the spend, was attributed to these top 15 capital projects. So you can see what we have spent money on. Some of them are grant-funded, right? So you don't see the pass-through grant, like Ridge, the second and third one, Ridge Pike Improvements, they obviously have federal funding and state funding that flow through to the projects. But that's the spend through April 30th. A lot of the capital projects are just getting off the ground. Typically, the summer months are where some of the others that you're not seeing on the list will begin and we'll have expenses as we go through the year. Next slide, please. So just looking ahead, the county's financial outlook, obviously, we have concerns, just like everyone does, right? The economy, economists out there are still talking about a slowdown and what's going to happen at the federal level and how's that going to impact the economy and the financial markets. So with everything that's going on with the federal budget, we feel like that there is a lot of pressure on the budget planning for '26. I mean, 35% of the general fund revenues come from federal and state grant funding. And we have, as I mentioned, we have direct federal and state pass-through funding that has been frozen or cut under the new federal administration. And that's in some of the departments, not all. Next slide, please. You guys are really challenging me, huh? The tariff negotiations, obviously, no one knows what the outcome's going to be here and that obviously can impact future costs and economic growth. So we have to pay close attention to that. The short-term interest rates, which have been favorable, they're targeted to go down. So once that happens, then we'll see a reduction in what we earn in investment income. On the flip side, it helps us on the borrowing piece when we go to market again, which may be a year or more from now. Hopefully, the borrowing costs will be lower, which will result in lower debt service. So at the moment, we are in the midst of our budget process for 2026. And we have an initiative underway that began two months ago where our fiscal staff is evaluating the '25 budget and the preliminary '26 budget proposals for cost containment opportunities and operational efficiencies. We started our budget meetings at the end of May and they'll continue through July. This is where we're going to be sorting through a lot of the proposals that are being brought forward by the departments for spending in '26. And these meetings are detailed. They take a long time and we go through a lot of discussion about our operations and where some of the new needs are. And then ultimately, how are we going to fund them? So in that process, the departments are also forecasting where they think they're going to end this year versus their budget. They'll have six months of actual experience under the belt with their expense budget and can put together a pretty strong forecast so we know where we're going to end at the end of the year. Ahead of us, we're going to be meeting with the board. We have info session scheduled August through October. Next slide, please. And then that'll lead us up to the presentation of the proposed budget in November with adoption scheduled at the last meeting of the board in December. Next slide. That's all ahead.
Yes. Any questions?
I think that was a really good presentation, a lot of valuable information. Glad to see the bond sales completed. Came in a pretty decent spot compared to market trends, so that's a good thing. One of the things that I know that we talked about previously and I brought up at the meetings that for the 2026 budget year we're going through, we know that we're positioned to currently looking at a $30 million-plus deficit. And I know that one of the things that we've been doing as a county, that we've gone through and asked all the departments to go through all of their expenditures and see if there's ways we could find to make adjustments so that we could cut into that $30 million-plus deficit for next year. So a lot of work has been underway. A lot of recommendations have come back, so I thank everyone that participated in that. And I know that you and others in the county are going through all that information and seeing what's really viable, what's been recommended with as minimal impact in the county as possible if we do make those kind of reductions. So I bring that up because I mentioned this before, that we have this type of a deficit. And I want everyone to know that we're working on it. It's not, oh, well, we're just going to go raise taxes. So I mean, it's a good thing that's happening. I don't know what it's going to, how it's going to end out within the next couple of weeks or so, but as we march towards having a budget in place for 2026, these are very difficult times. And we run on close to billion-dollar, right? Close to billion-dollar budget when we're all in. So there's a lot going on. There's a lot going on in the county. And it costs a lot of money to run the county and continue with all the programs that we have in place. But at some point, as a board, as board commissioners and department heads and all that, we're going to have to make some decisions. We're going to have to make some tough decisions. And we're going to have to see what we can do to minimize the potential tax impact on our community. So I commend everyone for all their hard work and doing this exercise. And I look forward to seeing how we can proceed forward.
Thank you. And we'll continue on in the weeks ahead and we'll be communicating with the board whether it's another formal financial presentation or through info session meetings that we have. And we'll be providing more information on how that budget's shaping up as we get through the department meetings.
Great. Any other questions? Okay, thank you so much. Appreciate it. Okay, we're going to move on to the first public comment period. This is only on today's pending votes, resolutions, bids, RFPs, and contracts. Any commenters?
Yes, first we have Robert Douglas Moyer.
And for this section, if you could just state your name, your township, and what item number you wanted to speak on of the agenda.
Yes, I am Robert Douglas Moyer. I live in Collegeville, Perkyumon Township. I'm actually running for Perkyumon Township Supervisor and Perk One Judge of Elections. So it's an honor to be with you today. I come today to offer words of encouragement. I receive in the Monco Monthly.
Quick question.
Yes, sir.
Can you just tell me which? Can you just tell me which point on the agenda you wanted to speak on?
Well, we talked today about the different festivities that are taking place. In fact, there's going to be one this afternoon.
So we're going to have general public comment. I'm sorry to do this to you.
She called my name.
But this is just for resolutions. For example, we're voting on a lease agreement, we're voting on a TEFRA approval, we're voting on a number of contracts. Is it on any of those issues?
I did not, but I did write down that I was going to talk about the events that were happening. And I can talk later, that's fine, too.
Got it. So we'll just, we'll come back to you after we do the contracts.
That's fine.
Yeah, sorry to cut you off. Anyone specifically on the agenda item topics?
Barb Furman.
General comment.
Okay, great.
Okay, great.
And then we did have one person on Zoom who's going to be for general comment, and then Joe Rooney.
General or on the agenda item? Something we're going to vote on.
Hi, I'm Joe Rooney, and I guess I was introduced by Commissioner.
You were, Mr. Rooney.
Wynder earlier, and I wasn't going to talk initially, but I thought since she addressed me specifically, I just wanted to say that.
Quick thing, just agenda item only.
I understand that.
You can just say the agenda. You can come back in five minutes after we're done with the contracts.
I understand that, but I was just sitting here, and I just wanted to say that if the commissioners are going to point somebody out in the audience specifically and say their name.
Make that comment at the general comment.
That can't be seen as intimidating. Now, I'm not intimidated by it, but I just wanted to say that if you're going to talk to somebody like that, you probably ought to give them an opportunity to either see what it was all about. So for everybody else that's here, don't be intimidated by everybody, and I don't think that was good form.
You intimidate me all the time in this boardroom when you come here.
Good general.
All right, so we're going to, we're going to move on. There's no comments on the agenda? Okay. So I'm going to move to an approval of the minutes. Is there a motion to approve the May 15, 2025 minutes of Montgomery County Board of Commissioners meeting?
Seven.
Moved by Commissioner Wynder. Is there a second? I will second. Any board comment?
Fortunately, I wasn't at the meeting last one. I was speaking at Montgomery County Community College commencement at 10:00, so I wasn't at the meeting, so I will abstain from voting on the meeting minutes as well.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Abstain.
Abstain. Minutes moved. So moving on to RFPs, bids. Sorry, no, let's get the page here. Sorry, moving on to a TEFRA approval for Mount St. Joseph's Academy. We'll hear from our Commerce Director, Steve Forrester.
Good morning, Commissioners. First of all, I just want to say, good thing about the House budget is that it does, the federal budget, is that it does preserve tax-exempt bond financing, which is what we have before you today. Before you today is a request by Mount St. Joseph's Academy, a nonprofit corporation, seeking a resolution approving the issuance of one or a series of tax-exempt revenue bonds totaling approximately $15 million. Mount St. Joseph's is a Catholic college preparatory school for girls, grades nine through 12, founded in 1858, serving approximately 500 students. The bonds to be issued will fund capital improvements at their campus located at 120 West Whisahican Avenue in Flower Town, Montgomery County. The bonds are to be issued by the Montgomery County Industrial Development Authority and have been approved by the IDA pursuant to a TEFRA hearing and resolution adopted May 28th of this year. The hearing was properly advertised on the IDA website from May 21st through May 28th. Because the refinancing is for a Montgomery County-based entity, the Tax Equity and Fiscal Responsibility Act of 1982, or TEFRA, requires approval by the highest elected official in the county where the funds are to be utilized. Approval of this bond issue will benefit the health, safety, and welfare of residents of Montgomery County through the construction of a new athletic center. Mount is quite an athletic powerhouse, and the new athletic center is a tool to assist young women in finding their passion and excellence through healthy competition. By improving the physical plan of the school, Mount continues to grow its enrollment and the corresponding employment of new faculty, staff, faculty and staff that comes with such growth. Neither the general credit nor taxing authority of Montgomery County are pledged as security for these bonds. Thus, the county takes no financial risk nor obligation in this transaction, and it does not impact the county's balance sheet in any way. I therefore request your approval of the resolution as presented by our solicitor approving the issuance of these bonds. Thank you for your consideration.
Any questions? Okay. Is there a motion to approve? Resolution number one is described by Mr. Steve Forrester. Moved by Commissioner DeBello. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Commissioner Wynder. Any board comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The resolution is approved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Stephanie Tipton, our Deputy COO.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Stephanie Tipton, Deputy Chief Operating Officer. Today, I present a resolution for the board's consideration to authorize Montgomery County an entrance release agreement for office space to support the operations of our Information and Technology Solutions Department, or ITS. The space is needed to meet the growing space and operational needs of the county. After a review by the Department of Assets and Infrastructure, available office space at the Logan Square Shopping Center located at the intersection of Markley Street and Johnson Highway in Norristown was identified as a suitable location for ITS operations. The space is owned by Norristown Center ALP and has the necessary infrastructure to support the department's work. Under the terms of the proposed lease, the county would enter into a five-year agreement with Norristown Center ALP. The rent for the first year will be $188,669.25, with scheduled annual increases over the term of the lease as detailed in Exhibit A of the resolution. This location will allow ITS to continue delivering vital services in a secure and accessible environment. I respectfully recommend the board approve this resolution authorizing the proper county officials to execute the documents to enter into this lease agreement subject to the approval of the county's listener. Any questions?
Any questions? Okay. Is there a motion to approve? Resolution number two is described by Mrs. Stephanie Tipton, Deputy COO.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Wynder, seconded by Commissioner DeBello. Any board comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion is approved. Moving on to the personnel list. Mr. Tony Brew.
Good morning, Commissioners. You have in front of you the final copy of the Commissioner Department's personnel list. It is a three-page document dated June 4th, 2025, with a timestamp of 9:51 a.m. All positions have been reviewed and accounted for and are presented to you for your consideration.
Okay. Any questions? Is there a motion to approve the personnel presentation as given by Mr. Tony Brew?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Wynder. Is there a second? All second. Any board comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Moving on to Section I, Advertisement of Bids and RFPs, Exhibit A. Is there a motion to approve the advertisement of bids and RFPs for Montgomery County on attached Exhibit A?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner DeBello. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Commissioner Wynder. Any board comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The motion is approved. Moving on to Section J, Awards of Contract under Exhibit B. Is there a motion to approve the contract, awards, amendments, and renewals for Montgomery County on attached Exhibit B?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Wynder, seconded by Commissioner DeBello. Any board comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Moving on to Section K, Requests and Proposals Related to Southeast PA Regional Task Force. Is there a motion to approve the advertisement of bids and RFPs for Southeast PA Regional Task Force on attached Exhibit C?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner DeBello. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Commissioner Wynder. Any board comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Moving on to Section L, the Southeast PA Regional Task Force. Is there a motion to approve the contracts, awards, and amendments and renewals for Southeast PA Regional Task Force on attached Exhibit D?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Wynder. Is there a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Commissioner DeBello. Any board comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. There we go. We're now at public comment, so we can start with, you know, sorry to.
Mr. Moyer.
Mr. Moyer. Thank you. Go ahead.
Hello, I'm Robert Douglas Moyer. I live in Collegeville, Pennsylvania. I'm from Perkiumen Township. I'm also running for Perkiumen Township Supervisor and Perk Judge of Elections. It's an honor to be with you today. I come today with words of encouragement. I received the Monco Monthly, and it celebrated three events, which are all worthy to be mentioned, but I noticed of the events that were mentioned, there was one that was not mentioned, and that was American Flag Day, which is June 14th. Flag Day is on Saturday, June 14th, and it commemorates the adoption of the official flag of the United States by the Second Continental Congress on June 14th, 1777. The Stars and Stripes was officially adopted as a national flag during the Revolutionary War. The Monco Monthly website for June 2025 celebrates over 38 flags, and the American flag is not included. You celebrate the Gay Pride flag, 36 Immigrant Heritage Month flags, and a Juneteenth flag, but somehow you excluded the American flag that supports our God-given constitutional rights and freedoms that makes all these other flags even possible. God bless America, and God bless our American flag.
So, quick thing, we are recognizing Flag Day at our next meeting, which is closer to Flag Day, and we start every meeting with a pledge of allegiance to the flag, so we certainly recognize the American flag. Go ahead. Thank you.
Up next would be Barb Furman.
Go ahead. Is Barb Furman here?
She was in the hall.
Saw her walking out earlier.
Actually, okay.
Next one.
So then Joe Rooney.
Okay.
I'll try again. Joe Rooney, I live in Arglesley in Abington Township. I also did some deep reflection recently. I had a great opportunity to sail from St. Martin back to the Chesapeake. My wife and I are sailors. So amazingly, when we went to St. Martin, we checked in with immigration legally, and when we departed St. Martin, we did it legally. And when we came into the U.S. in Delittville, Virginia, we also went to Richmond and checked in legally. It's amazing how simple this thing works. But what I reflected on was how wonderful and blessed we are. Montgomery County is a great place. Despite some of the things you might have heard today, this is not a community of hate. This is a community of love. This is a community of welcoming. This is a community where everybody's welcome, and the world knows it, okay? We live in a great state. We live in the greatest country the world has ever known. It is the least discriminatory, the least racist, the most welcoming to everybody of no matter what your race, your creed, or your color is. Despite what some of our leaders here may say, the world wishes they could be in America. I have been blessed through my Marine Corps career and my Delta career to travel all over the world, and I promise you, there are people trying to legally immigrate to the United States in Surabaya, Indonesia, in Papua New Guinea, across the Pacific Islands, in Australia. This place is wonderful, and the way we're wonderful is we respect the rule of law and we treat everybody fairly. So what I would like to say to you all is, we had a tragic loss of a police officer. We cannot undermine the rule of law and also give sympathy to a police officer who dies. Our ICE agents defend our country every day, and I thank God for them. What I would recommend to this young lady is, we need to have an ICE representative in this office so anybody that's confused can understand how you legally come into the United States. And if you are here illegally, number one, go home. The second one is, you can look up how to get here legally and stand in line like everybody else stood in line. It's the way our country is great by respecting the rule of law. We can't have leadership undermining our rule of law and then at the same time expressing sympathy for our law enforcers. Finally, I'd just like to do one little thing, copying what Doug was just saying. For our often-maligned and always-neglected Christian brothers and sisters, we just celebrated Ascension Thursday, and we have Pentecost Sunday coming up. So we hope you all have a blessed Ascension Thursday and Pentecost Sunday, and we respect you. Doug mentioned Flag Day. I would love to see a flag for Mother's Day. God bless all of our mothers. Father's Day, God bless our fathers. A man, a woman, and a kid, that is what made our country great, and they're committed for life. We have the 80th anniversary of VE Day, which was the victory in World War II in Europe, and finally, our 250th anniversary. Let's see flags for all of them. Thank you, sir.
Next one.
Up next is Rabbi Elise Wekerman, Weatherman.
A different voice from Abington. Buenos dias. Salam aleikum. Ba'ker tov. Good morning. I am Rabbi Elise Wekerman. I am a proud resident of Montgomery County from Abington Township, where I've lived for 10 years. I'm a third-generation American whose ancestors came to this country over 100 years ago, seeking a better future, which I am blessed to live. I'm here for two reasons this morning. One is to thank you, to thank you very much for the work that you are already doing to protect the immigrant neighbors and friends of our community. Your public refusal to allow the deputization of Montgomery County law enforcement by ICE is laudable and gratefully received. Thank you so much. Your statements and presence with the community, the immigrant community, is seen and heard and appreciated. And there is much more that you can do. The Welcome Act, model legislation provided by legal experts, allows you, working legally, jurisdiction within your jurisdiction to protect and support the nearly 100,000 foreign-born residents of our county. You can prevent county employees from collecting and sharing immigration information. You can prohibit contracts and agreements with federal agencies. You can forbid county officials from assisting in immigration enforcement without judicial warrants, which are legally required. But far more than that, if you pass the Welcome Act, you will be sending a very loud and clear message, and it's a message that all Americans need to hear. In recent months, we've seen a cascade of capitulation to the unconstitutional, unfounded, and totalitarian efforts of this administration among universities, law firms, and municipalities. You have the opportunity to change that. I understand that doing that is really hard. I understand that passing the Welcome Act may have significant financial impact on our country. Should federal grants and other federal money be withheld? I understand the personal risk it takes to stand up to this administration, but I also understand that once one person stands up and says no, it makes it much easier for the next, and the next, and the next after that. You can help start a cascade of resistance to mirror the cascade of capitulation. You can join the likes of Harvard University, of Senator Cory Booker, and the others who are saying no. You can be the heroes that we are waiting for in this moment. You and I know that almost everybody in this room is descended from immigrants. I know that you know that. You and I know that this country would not be what it is without people from all over the world coming here to make it so. And you and I also know that as people of faith, any faith, that caring for the destitute, welcoming the stranger, is the very least we can do to recognize the humanity and sanctity of every single person on this planet. Please make Montgomery County a shining example of these values. Thank you for your time today.
Thank you, Rabbi. Thank you.
Next up is Vince Sobosinski.
Hey, good morning, Commissioners. My name is Vince Sobosinski, and I'm from Whitpain Township. I want to comment on the 2025 budget presentation just, we heard just earlier today from Mr. D'Arton. Very good presentation, very thorough. I think he addressed what we are all concerned about, is how are we going to get this budget under control? Now, my concern, having heard the presentation, is that wages and benefits look like they're going to, on a run rate, going to be better than budget. Sounds like investment income will be better than budget, maybe states' gains income may be better than budget. What we're looking at is somewhere north, or maybe just south of $30 million deficit. We can't get there with those kinds. We can't get there with those kind of small incremental improvements. So what I'd like to say is that I think Mr. D'Arton should come back, probably on a monthly basis, or certainly bi-monthly. Because as we look at '26, we are at risk of missing a substantial part of our budget as we go forward here. This year's millage increase was about nine, a little over 9%. That is unsustainable in our county. It is too high. So my request of the Board, the Commissioners, would be to ask Mr. D'Arton to apply some real rigor to how he's asking the departmental heads to come back to him with budgetary constraints. In other words, we need to get the budget to a targeted number that is well below where it's trending right now. There are other risks in the budget that he had pointed out too, and he did a very good job of laying out some of the risks around the federal funding, et cetera. Can't control all that, we know that. But the things we can control, we've really got to get our arms around, and that's the part that I want to focus on. So again, to Mr. D'Arton, nice presentation. I'd like him to come back more frequently to update us on the status and improvements he's making and applying some real serious rigor to how the departmental heads manage their expenses. Unfortunately, in this difficult time, downward. Because we, as a community here, cannot continue to support a 9% plus rating, a cost increase, tax increase, for our real estate costs. So that's a really important piece, and it's becoming a little more more known in the community. Most people talk about this stuff. They don't think about it. They just get a bill and they pay it. But I walk around a lot in Whitpain, and I hear a lot about it. Now, Whitpain's looking at a fairly ugly increase as well, somewhere in the order of about 9%. So when you start putting township increases at 9%, county increases at 9%, we're rapidly approaching a point where we seriously need to step back and evaluate where we're going. Now, my last comment with just a few seconds left is, I understood there was an outside body that was going to work with the Board to help manage our expenses. If that's the case, I'd love to know what they're kind of proposing, how we're proceeding, and maybe you can update us on subsequent meetings. Thank you very much.
Thanks. So yeah, I'll just make a quick comment on this topic. I'm very grateful that in Montgomery County, we did not have the kind of increase that was seen elsewhere, including 36%, 23%, you know, around the Commonwealth. Part of the reason that this is, you know, inevitable at the local level is because of the structure of the way we can raise taxes, right? It's only through property tax revenue. They're not reassessed regularly. And by raising the millage rate, we're just trying to keep pace with where things are in inflation, the cost of health care, et cetera. So it's not as though, even in those counties where you see an increase in the 20s and 30s, they're not, you know, dramatically increasing their spending or programs. They're just keeping pace in many ways. But here, Dean has done a great job finding, I mean, we found millions of dollars in cost savings for that last budget to keep it at the number that it landed on. And we have an RFP out with a consultant that will look for other savings, and it's structured in a way where it's incentivized for them to find more. Right? So that's going to happen. And we also created this new office this year, the OISP Innovation Strategy Performance, looking at ways we can innovate, be more efficient. And we're doing just a tremendous amount in this space. Doesn't mean that costs aren't, I mean, costs aren't going to go up, because they do. And, you know, the cost of health care being the number-one driver of all of these increases across the board. So yeah, I just want you to know that we hear you. We've directed our team, all of us have been focused on this issue. And, you know, the other thing I would just say is, is if there's advocacy to be done, it's around making sure the state legislature gives us different options for funding county services other than just the property tax. Next comment.
Up next is Iman Ahmad.
Good morning, everyone. Good morning, Commissioners. I'd just like to say thank you for acknowledging Eid Al Adhaaf on behalf of the Muslim community. We greatly appreciate it. And the next thing I wanted to say is that I'm here in support of the Welcome Act. I'm not going to give a lecture. You already know what's involved. My greatest concern is because of the trauma that children are experiencing when they see these acts take place, both at home, in their community, the loss of a parent at the end of the day, and even more so when they observe it in their schools. So they are traumatized first at home, then at schools, and then there's no resources being provided for mental health for the children. And that is why I'd like to see support for the Welcome Act. Thank you.
Thanks.
Up next is Sandra Levine.
Good morning. My name is Sandra Levine from Hatfield Township. Two quick things. One, in visiting people who get mail-in ballots, I had two people who said, "I never got the form" where they had been getting a form every year to say, "Do you want to continue getting it?" And she looked at me and she said, "I don't have a mail-in ballot." And I said, "Oh." Then she showed me the postcard that all of us received, I think, in the county, which came very, much closer to Election Day, that was addressed to the Drummond household. Well, her husband had died before I met her, and she was on the list to get it. And somebody else also didn't get one. So I don't know what was happening there, why some people ignored. I called somebody else. He said, "No, I got my request."
So unfortunately, just a quick thing. The Pennsylvania state law doesn't allow you to just sign up indefinitely to get a ballot. So you do have to request it every single year. And then you have to, you have to check, I think, a box that puts you on the permanent list, which is not a permanent list. It's a very imperfect process. The reason we sent out the postcard is precisely because people aren't aware of this process. And I hope we continue to do that, and we'll do that earlier. But I think it's--
My understanding was someone who had been on the list got something from the county saying, "Do you want to be on the list this year?" Is that, I don't understand--
Well, I think if, yeah, we can look at your individual case. If you want to give us the information, we can follow up on that.
But what is the system? Does everybody who, like, if you receive them this year, do you get something from the county at the beginning of next year to say, "Do you want to be on the list"?
The Department of State sends something out.
It's the state and not the county?
Yes. The county can do things on top of that, but the state does send an initial mailing. We'll talk, we have a former Executive Deputy Secretary of State here who now works at the county--
Because I don't do mail-in, I didn't know. But I knew people were getting them a question, "Do you want it?" And then they'd say, "Yes, I want it." Yeah, okay. And then the second thing, just, I live in a neighborhood where we have people from everywhere. Asian countries, from Egypt, from communist Cuba. And their taxes keep going up and up, and they're hurting. They're very busy working their jobs. We're getting along. And to put in a new position of DEI, I understand that it's more money that's coming out of our taxes. And I wonder what standards you're looking for and how you want to measure whether this position is successful. I know the lady who is the physician of it is here today. But I wouldn't be able to tell these people this is why, what's benefit there is to this, because we're all getting along as neighbors. And I don't see a reason for this. But thank you very much.
Up next is Julio Rodriguez.
Good afternoon. It just became noon, so it's good afternoon. My name is Julio Rodriguez, and I'm with the Pennsylvania Immigration Coalition. I'm here speaking on behalf of volunteers and our members who have a huge presence here in the county. I want to start off by addressing the lack of a welcoming policy here in the county.
Quick question, just a quick question.
Yes, sir.
How many members do you have in Montgomery County?
We have approximately 25 member organizations. And I can get back to you about how many volunteers, which is quite a few. They couldn't make it though because of the time.
Got it.
So as I was saying, I'm here to address the fact that there isn't a welcoming policy. And, you know, as has been mentioned at length, we all know about what are the reasons why the county is not doing it. But I want to reiterate, the courts have said that you are able to. Lawsuits will always be a threat. You know, there was, it was spoken of being on this list, as if being on this bogus list by DHS is a bad thing. And what's interesting is that even though the county didn't put a policy in place, it still ended up on the list. So we have four years of this. It's not four days, four months. So we really want to reiterate that. And there was a comment made about legal versus not legal. And what I want to say is, today you're legal, and tomorrow you're not. Just last month, almost 1 million immigrants lost their legal status. Folks that did things the right way, they came here on parole through the president's executive ability. And the Supreme Court said, "You know what? You guys have lost your deportation status." Almost 1 million people. Folks are going to court for the immigration hearing and being picked up. So what else are folks supposed to do? The system is set up so that you fail. They're going to court. The judge is missing their case, and they're being picked up. As a reminder, immigration judges work for the Department of Justice. So if they don't do their job, they get fired. And their job is being told to do these things. I want to be mindful of my time. You know, as it relates to how this implicat-- the implications of this here at the county level, from our understanding, the county solicitor has stated that the Montgomery County Correctional Facility holds individuals four hours past their, past their release time. And that is a choice. From our understanding, two people have been released to ICE custody. I believe one of them was, was in fact deported. And this is something that the county is deciding to do because these individuals that were released to ICE custody, there was no subsequent judicial warrants. Let me crystal clear. When we say, like, there is no sanctuary. ICE is already working in different cities. So I want to make that distinction clear. This is a welcoming policy, which is in full compliance with the law. And so I want to really reiterate, you know, the county has over 3,000 employees. There is no guarantee that they're not calling ICE or working with them. So what is it going to take for this county to be able to do that? And so last thing I'll say is, I'm happy to follow up with all of you, but the governor of Maine at the White House was threatened with federal funds. She went to court and won. We won't know if that'll happen unless the county takes, takes this on and chooses to have leadership around the introduction and passage of this policy. Thank you.
Up next is Jay Lee.
Hello, my name is Jay, and I work with immigrant community organization in Landville called Udi Center. Celebrating the month of immigrant heritage, we appreciate Montgomery County for hosting the block party and inviting immigrant community organizations to represent the diversity of our proud county. And the support from Commissioners and the Office of Immigration Affairs really means a great deal for immigrant communities. However, it saddens me that many of immigrant residents, the countless essential workers of our society, cannot join us and celebrate with us today. There are families whose moms, dads, daughters, and sons taken from them through ICE operation over the weekend. And thank you for your acknowledgement of the gravity of such unjust enforcement actions that violate people's right for due process and ignore federal court orders. We thank you again, Commissioner Makhiza and Winder, for the promise of not collaborating with ICE, not to sign 287G. But we, but I know that this promise is the beginning of the committed, committed support you will provide for our community. To the, to the regard, again and again, we expect your introduction of policy, policy or ordinance as the substantial measures to protect our community. We know that welcoming county policy or ordinance is not going to stop ICE operation. But it is important for our community members to know that our community, county, and local municipalities they live in do not use their resources or tax that they are paying to support the federal enforcement actions that many times involve unlawful decisions and strategies that disregards the legal status of the people. This is not just about the many undocumented individuals that are taken without due process on civil offense, not criminal offense, civil offense. And this is also about the spread of fear and uncertainty that targets anyone who came to this country to pursue higher education, the people with limited English proficiency, and people whose skin color or cultural religious practices do not conform with the unclear standards of those federal actions. Therefore, we will continue to raise our voice and deliver this message in Commissioner Board meetings, talking to the local municipal officials and the local police. Thank you for your time, and thank you for your commitment to protect our community. Thank you.
Up next is Reverend Peter Martin.
Greetings, Reverend Peter Martin of First Presbyterian Church of Norristown, Tall Steeple Church, just a few blocks from here, part of the Norristown skyline, 200 years as part of this borough community. I've worked with this group before, the work of Val Arcousch, when we all talked about being compliant during COVID. And I'm not here to talk about our border. I'm also not even here necessarily to talk about sanctuary, county, welcome policy. All those things are above my pay grade and outside of my bandwidth. But I do want to talk about package ethics and partisan. I see no contradiction with being up here. And at my church, we will welcome Amneon Pregnancy Center this Sunday because we support them. At Amneon's open house, I met Joe Gale, a former commissioner here. He was there to support them too. I am here advocating this morning for all of those who simply want to worship. There is, we have multiple tenants, including a sister church in our denomination, the Presbyterian Church USA, is one of the oldest American denominations. It has, it has been around before this country ever was. Our sister church in our building is celebrating 22 years of Spanish ministry, but I'm reticent to even give details about that celebration up here in public venue. I'm also going to have to contact your employee Sharon Cullen and tell her we're not going to use the jurors' lot, but thank you for approving us to be outdoors. The sanctity of houses of worship right now, I feel like, is coming under fire. That executive orders say that immigration agents can enter our houses of worship. So if we're going to talk about Pentecost Sunday, which I'm really looking forward to this Sunday, along with having Amneon there, let's talk about the command of Jesus Christ that tells us to love our neighbors. Whatever the laws of our country are, Jesus commanded that to every Christian in every country. He promised that two or three would be gathered. If two or three are gathered in His name, there He would be also. So I wonder, and I'm asking this county, what can you do to help us to make sure that we continue to love our neighbors Jesus Christ told us to? What can this county do so that we can still have two or three gathered in the name of Jesus Christ without worrying about everything else that's happening with immigration? The law is law. But I'm here to talk about the commandment that Jesus Christ handed us down. So I don't envy your job, but thank you for listening.
Up next is Natalia Norango.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Natalia Norango. I'm a resident here of Norristown, PA. I just want to say, I, we have been part of some of the folks that have been gathering information on some of the people that have been arrested by ICE. We've been told it's over 17 arrests. I have full names and information about some of the people that have been arrested, many without warrants and many without criminal records. I can name you at least-- I can name you at least five without those records. And when we're here to talk about that, we wouldn't be here talking about that, right? The commissioners wouldn't have made posts if people weren't recording, if people weren't there as legal observers, right? If people weren't able to talk to their neighbors and show up for their neighbors as people are being pulled out of their houses and as people are being pulled out of their cars. And so, I just want to say, I am very grateful for the people that are doing that. I think we need more people to be legal observers and recording and documenting these moments. I also want to talk about our Fourth Amendment right, right? Protection against unreasonable searches and seizures. What we're seeing is that whether people are documented or undocumented in this country, they do have a right to their Fourth Amendment as made. And right now, those are clearly being violated by ICE and unofficial ICE DHS folks. And so, when we talk about our liberty and our pursuit, what are we seeing? One of the last things that I want to share is that we're talking about people being legal, illegal, documented, undocumented. These are the people that work in Montgomery County. They build our homes, they are construction workers, they're in the restaurants, they're working behind the scenes in places that you don't even see, and we get to profit off of their taxes. When we're talking about illegal people, we're talking about the people that are providing for their families, we're talking about the people that are providing for us here in this community. You can't condemn us and profit off of our work, our labor, and the taxes that we benefit into this community. So, you can't have both. Decide which one it is that you want and which one it is that you're going to condemn. Thank you.
Thank you. And just to ask you, are you with an organization?
Yeah, I'm with them.
Okay. Have you, you've met with Nellie?
No.
Okay. Make sure to do that at some point. So, I think, and the reason I say that is because you, you know, you mentioned information that you've gathered and brought together, and that's very helpful. But we need a secure way of, you know, understanding, you know, are there people who we can help or not?
Yeah.
Thanks.
Yeah, I would love to talk to you during the month with that.
Up next is Anissa Benvenidas.
She's speaking, I'm translating.
Hi, my name is Toni. I'm here today to ask the commissioners to pass a welcome policy. I'm here because my brothers and sisters didn't go to school because of house care. They are about right. I'm being, being in the community. I want to make sure my mom is protected. With a welcome policy, she can, she can make sure employees are not working with ICE. I'm scared, I'm scared my mom wouldn't, wouldn't be safe. And she will not come home from work. Please pass a welcome policy.
Nellie, why don't you stick around afterwards and let's, let's have a conversation. Go ahead.
Next is Denise. I'm sorry, I can't read that. Aburto?
Aburto. Hola, mi nombre es Denise Aburto. Vivo en Montgomery County. Voy a hablar en español la primera parte y voy a hablar en espa, en inglés después. Que quiero empezar agradeciendo a nuestra comisionada, Mrs. Winder, por el statement que puso afuera, que toda nuestra comunidad lo vio. Muchas gracias por eso. Creemos que eso hace mucha la diferencia. Pero quiero ser honesta, voy a leer un poco lo que voy a decir para terminar rápido. Quiero ser honesta, que aprobar una ley del condado de bienvenida a nuestros inmigrantes es más importante porque nosotros creemos que tenemos fe de que si las personas llegan, son detenidas, llegan al, el condado, la cárcel del condado, estamos, vamos a estar más seguros de que no van a llamar a inmigración. Ese sabe y lo tenemos documentado de que ellos tienen esta poliza de cuatro horas de mantener a una persona y llamar a inmigración para que venga a llevársela. Además de esto, creemos también que los empleados que trabajan en el condado deben de saber de que cualquier trámite que se hace aquí debe quedar aquí. Ellos no tienen por qué llamar a inmigración bajo ningún punto, ninguna circunstancia. Sabemos también, entendemos que los trabajadores del condado están asustados y no saben qué hacer, si ir en contra o a favor de la administración federal. Pero con este acta de bienvenida a los inmigrantes, ellos pueden tener entrenamientos donde se les diga qué pueden hacer, qué es permitido y qué no es permitido. Esa es parte de asegurar que nuestros inmigrantes sean de verdad bienvenidos. Necesitamos esta protección por escrito. También quiero agradecerles por tener una oficina de asuntos de inmigración. Nosotros cuando empezamos a venir a estas salas, se nos estaba diciendo, esperen para que la señora que va a asumir el cargo lo asuma. Hoy por hoy, la señora está con nosotros y trabaja con las organizaciones que, de las comunidades inmigrantes. Mi organización, Unidas para Servir, no ha sido invitada a ninguna reunión, y ahí hemos estado aquí más de dos meses ya, desde que se nos dijo que la señora venía con nosotros. Somos la organización que está organizando a la comunidad inmigrante del área. Quiero dejar eso claro porque nosotros no hemos sido invitados bajo ningún, porque el comisionado preguntó eso. Sin embargo, también me siento profundamente ofendida, y quiero que esto recalque, profundamente ofendida. Una, una fiesta de herencia del inmigrante hoy, cuando dos días hemos estado con mucha carga de ICE en el pueblo, es un insulto. Eso es un insulto, y no se los permito. Nuestra comunidad necesita paz, tranquilidad, y que estén de nuestro lado, lo que Natalia dijo. Pero una, una fiesta para celebrar la inmigración cuando nosotros estamos siendo atacados nos rompe el corazón porque creemos que es un insulto. Ayer nos dijeron que nosotros vamos a tener un party, una block party, una protesta, un rally, en nuestro distrito latino de negocios, y nos fueron a decir que lo canceláramos. ¿Por qué ustedes no cancelaron el evento de hoy? ¿Por qué nos piden a nosotros que cancelemos un evento de nosotros, de ustedes, los ciudadanos americanos que nos vienen a ayudar? Pero, sin embargo, ustedes no cancelan un evento por nosotros que nosotros nos estamos desangrando? No me parece justo. Yo quiero decir esto claro, y lo estoy diciendo en español porque yo pienso que nuestra comunidad inmigrante allá afuera también se está sintiendo como yo me estoy sintiendo. Alguien me dijo en estos días, y yo quiero repetirlo claramente, y se lo he dicho a todas las personas, cuando nosotros vemos a alguien llorar, desangrarse, sorry, cuando nosotros vemos a alguien desangrarse, ustedes llaman a Na'iwanguan, nos van a ayudar. Pero cuando nosotros nos estamos desangrando, nuestras familias están llorando, se están desangrando, no nos están ayudando. Por favor, tratenlos con respeto y, con respeto y dignidad. Yo confío en ustedes, son nuestros líderes. Ustedes le hicieron la traducción en su teléfono, o sea, no tengo que decirlo en inglés.
Next, come on.
Thank you. Next up is Jasmine Griffin.
Hello, commissioners. My name is Jasmine Griffin. I am a councilwoman in Norristown. But I am speaking as well as a member of our community. These ICE raids are creating extreme fear, terrorization, and tearing apart families. Families have no idea where their loved ones are going. Many have no contact or way of contacting their loved ones once they are taken. If we're going to talk about agreeing to the law and following the law, then I would hope that we would extend that to understanding that due process is a fundamental right and cornerstone of our legal system. And it is meant to protect us from arbitrary, and arbitrary can mean on a whim, federal action or policy. Yes, they are immigrants. They are also human beings and members of our community. As a community, I will stand with them, and I hope, as stated, that you will, will as well. I want to thank Commissioner Makiya and Commissioner Winder for your support, and thank you.
Next, come on.
Up next is Leo Fernandez.
Buenas tardes. Estoy aquí una vez más para pedirles confirmese de respeto, que nos mantengan informados y nos proporcionen actualizaciones claras sobre el Welcoming County Act.
Good afternoon. I am here once again to ask you firmly and respectfully to keep us informed and provide clear updates of the Welcoming County Act.
Hace ya dos meses que solicitamos esto precisamente porque veníamos a venir, lo que ahora está ocurriendo. Esto no es nuevo. Es por eso que seguimos insistiendo en trabajar juntos como comunidad para avanzar en esta causa.
We made this request two months ago precisely because we saw what is happening now. This is not anything new, and that's why we continue insisting on working together as a community to move this effort forward.
Reconocemos el esfuerzo que están haciendo y agradecemos que la señora directora haya presentado su plan. Pero también es importante decir que hasta ahora no se ha reunido con nosotros. Cuando digo nosotros, somos la comunidad.
We recognize the effort that is being made, and we appreciate that the immigrant director presented her plan, but it is also important to say that up until now, she has not met with us from the community, which we have been coming here consistently advocating for a welcoming policy.
No solo somos impuestos, no solo somos contribución, no solamente somos números. Nuestra labor, también somos miembros de familia. Porque no se dice nada sobre las 22 o 25 personas que han recogido.
We are not just taxpayers, and we are not just here to contribute through our labor. We are family members. So, why is nothing more being said about the 22 to 25 people who have already been detained?
Cuántas personas necesitan más. Por eso, hoy quiero pedirles con el corazón en la mano, que nos escuchen, que nos ayuden a que este acta sea aprobada.
How many more people will it take to get detained? That is why today I want to ask you with my heart in mind to listen to us and help make sure this act is approved.
Es por eso que queremos que los empleados del condado no trabajen con ICE. Esta lucha no es sola, no solamente es política, es humana.
This is why we want county employees to not cooperate with ICE. The struggle is not just political, it's human.
Me siento profundamente orgulloso de ser de la, de la comunidad de Norristown.
I am deeply proud to be part of the Norristown community.
Gracias a los concejales y en especialmente a la comisionada Jamila por alzar su voz y apoyar esta causa.
Thank you to the commissioners, and especially to Commissioner Jamila for raising your voice and supporting this cause.
Thank you.
And might I suggest for folks that need translation that they get additional time so that, that they can speak their two minutes in their language and two minutes in, in English. Thank you.
That's okay. Next, come on.
Next, we're going to move to Zoom. So, Rebecca Schultz. Rebecca, can you hear us? Rebecca? Okay. We can come back to Rebecca. Next, we'll try Amy Fried. Amy, can you hear us? Hold on one second. Okay. Apologies. Rebecca, can you hear us?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead. Okay.
Okay, thank you. Good afternoon, commissioners. My name is Rebecca Schultz. I live in Elkins Park in Shelttonham Township. Can you still hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry. And I, many, many people have spoken very eloquently and given a lot of detail about why a welcome act is so important. I'm going to speak from personal experience. I am the wife and stepmother of immigrants from Sub-Saharan Africa. They're all naturalized citizens. I, I am a person who identifies as white. I was born in this country. My ancestors came to this country from Eastern Europe and Central Europe, and they did it the quote unquote "right way." And the right way at that time was subject to no quotas, no restrictions. I think people need to understand that the quotas and restrictions in place in our current immigration system did not apply to many of our ancestors and relatives, particularly if we identify as white. And I want to be really clear about that. The second thing I want to say is that the immigration process, which my entire family went through, is stressful, it's confusing, and it's expensive. And I am saying this as a native English speaker, as somebody with class and race and cultural privilege, with the cultural ability to push back, to contest, to press for answers. So, I want folks who have not had any experience with the immigration system to understand how difficult it is to make your way through it, and that there are many, many people in this country who are trying to do it the quote unquote "right way" and are struggling to navigate this system. And for these people to be so afraid that they're going to be caught up in ICE raids with, without a warrant, so being denied due process, is, is unconscionable to me, and a welcome policy is needed to be able to address this. Thank you.
Next, Amy.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. Good afternoon, commissioners and the audience. What the White House is threatening when it published its list last week, which has already been removed, is federal overreach and unconstitutional. It is not the responsibility or jurisdiction of the local government to enforce federal immigration law, especially not with a rogue agency that is violating due process and ignoring federal court orders. This was made explicit when the Third Circuit Court ruled in favor of the city of Philadelphia twice for its executive order. In terms of funding issues, as somebody mentioned, the governor of Maine, there are two decisions, 2017 and 2018, that hold that only Congress can create new restrictions on federal grants. This is a scare tactic meant to coerce local governments into collaborating with ICE, and right now, Montgomery County is playing right into it by not passing a welcoming county policy. Everyone is clear on the fact that this won't stop ICE from arresting people in public places, but there's absolutely no excuse for why the commissioners are allowing their county employees, including those at the detention center, to assist ICE in this terror. Our powers and our numbers, as more and more local governments refuse to comply with ICE, the more impossible becomes for the White House to follow through with any of its baseless threats. Because once again, if they attempt it, they will lose. It is one thing to go after 16 local governments. It's something entirely different to go after 100, to go after 1,000. They can't come after all of us. Rhetoric without action is hollow, and until they have, until you have a policy on record, nothing is enforceable. No statement, no op-ed is going to bring back the people who've already been detained or deported because their employees assisted ICE. No amount of new county positions created stops their employees from continuing to assist ICE. Only a policy that they train staff on and hold staff accountable to does that. That's what's in their control as commissioners, and they should be exercising every bit of their power not to be complicit with ICE. So, I, I, I stopped being distracted by the groundless threats from the White House and passed the welcoming county policy. Because now, right now, all of our rights are on the line. Citizen, non-citizen, documented and non-documented by, undocumented by this type of terror. And I also just wanted to add that my great-grandparents were arrested and shot in Lithuania by police. So, I would ask people, especially the commissioner, to be a little bit more judicious when he talks about supporting police no matter what. It's like any other institution, it could be used for evil, it can be used for good. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Yeah, finally, Marilyn Muir.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yes, go ahead.
Marilyn Muir, Lower Southford Township. A few weeks ago, some Asian immigrants attended the commissioners' meeting with interpreters in the home country or another country where they have lawful status through the CBP Home App. Illegal aliens who register for voluntary self-departure through the CBP Home App may be eligible to receive financial assistance for their departure. If requested, the US government will assist in booking tickets and/or with obtaining necessary travel documentation. The CBP Home mobile app allows aliens to plan your return, including having an opportunity to depart in a timely manner. Once aliens submit their intent to deport through the CBP Home App and pass vetting, they will be temporarily deprioritized by ICE for detention or enforcement actions before their scheduled departure. A $1,000 stipend will be provided upon confirmation through the app that return has been completed. The CBP Home program lets eligible aliens return home as regular travelers without arrest, detention, or restraints. It is a safe, orderly alternative that provides assistance and flexibility, not fear. I would also encourage residents of Montgomery County to report officials suspected of violating federal immigration policy. You can contact the ICE tip line by calling 866-347-2423 24 hours a day, 7 days a week. Additionally, you can reach out to the ICE Voice hotline at 855-488-6423 from 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM. Thank you.
That is all for public comment.
Okay. I want to thank everyone for their comments. This is a very difficult issue, and it's not easy to see what's happening while, you know, we as a county, I think, are very proud of the work that we're doing and the commitment that we have, particularly when you look at what's happening in other counties and jurisdictions around the country, where commitments have gone in the opposite direction, where public officials are not even speaking to the issue, where public officials have removed funding, where organizations have removed funding from organizations that support immigrant communities. I think we are doing what we can with our authority to support immigrant communities in Montgomery County, and there's no action that we're taking or not taking because we are worried about unconstitutional acts from the federal government, which we've seen in relation to the other institutions, whether they be law firms or academic institutions. We've laid out very clear, Commissioner Winder and I wrote an op-ed that understands that we have legal standing as a local jurisdiction, and essentially the right to serve our community is the best we see fit. We are not a regional arm of the federal government, we're not here to enforce this administration's policies, and we do so in a way that actually respects the rule of law and respects all that come with it, including due process, constitutional rights, and even the basic structure of statutory authority of which the president is supposed to operate by. The agency DHS is operating well outside of its congressional authorization right now. Unfortunately, that's not something that we, as a locality, can step in and do something about, but our residents have members of Congress who can take action in that regard. So I want to encourage, you know, everyone who comes in on these issues to think about how we can make a difference, and, you know, some of that is going to be by advocating federally, some of that are going to be the kinds of policies that we continually work on and are committed to in the county. It's also going to be a question of raising to light many of the stories that you have because, frankly, the policies that are being implemented at the federal level are happening because the public has been sold a lie that immigrants are criminals. And we know that immigrants are members of our community without who we could not function, without who we could not thrive, members of our families. And, you know, when we hear the stories about children and how they're affected, children who've done nothing wrong, it's heartbreaking. And so we have to make, what I would ask the advocates is that you tell those stories and continue sharing them with the public because they need to be heard, they need to be understood. And I am not afraid, and I know we're not afraid, to do what's best for our residents. And if we need to go to court, there's plenty of precedent, as we outlined in the Third Circuit, that says that local governments have the authority to, you know, not to be commandeered by the federal government essentially and to do what's best for our communities. So you have our commitment that we are going to continually work on this. I know, you know, oftentimes advocates want to rally around model policies, and we are going to look at the model, but we don't just adopt models, right? We're going to do what's best for Montgomery County, we're going to come up with a set of solutions or of policy actions that we hear from you and that we work together with leaders in the community and others that's, you know, really addressing the concerns that we're hearing, that's community-driven. And that's the way that we approach this. And in that spirit, I really want to encourage anyone, a lot of people came up here who've never spoken to Nellie before, and so if you have things that you're hearing and ways that we can support the communities, like, please bring those to us, and we will work on them as a community-driven policy. And that's the way forward for us and the way that we're going to move. So that's my comment. If you want to add anything, or either one, if you want to add any comments.
Good.
Okay. All right. With that, we will adjourn this meeting. I'll note our upcoming meeting, which is June 18th, 10:00 AM in this boardroom. It's on a Wednesday, please note, because Juneteenth is, you know, observed, and we will be in the county at that day. So Wednesday, June 18th, 10:00 AM. Is there a motion to adjourn the June 5th, 2025 meeting of the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Winder. Is there a second? Standing by Commissioner DeBello. Any board comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. We'll move to a brief meeting of our Salary Board and ask our Controller Bob Hart to join us. Yes, okay. Do we have Tony? Do you want to come right up?
All right. Good afternoon, members of the Salary Board. You should have in front of you the final copy of the Salary Board list. It's a five-page document dated January, I'm sorry, June 4th, 2025, with a timestamp of 9:51 AM. Officers have been received and accounted for and are presented to you for your consideration.
Is there a motion to approve the Salary Board presentation as given by Mr. Tony Brew, Chief Human Resources Officer?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Winder. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Controller Bob Hart. Any board comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
Thank you.
That's all we've got, right? Is there a motion to adjourn the Salary Board? Oh, sorry, any public comment? There's no public comments, there's no public comments. All right. Is there a motion to adjourn Salary Board meeting?
So moved.
移到 by Commissioner DeBello. Any second?
A second.
Second by Mr. Winder. Any board comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
Thank you.
That's all we've got, right? Is there a motion to adjourn the Salary Board? Oh, sorry, any public comment? There's no public comments, there's no public comments. All right. Is there a motion to adjourn Salary Board meeting?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner DeBello. Any second?
A second.
Second by Mr. Winder. Any board comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
Thank you.
That's all we've got, right? Is there a motion to adjourn the Salary Board?
Any comment?
Oh, sorry, any public comment? There's no public comments, there's no public comments. All right. Is there a motion to adjourn Salary Board meeting?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner DeBello. Any second?
A second.
Second by Mr. Winder. Any board comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.